I'd like to call the regular session meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Romanek.
Here.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Here.
Commissioner Sui.
Here.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Here.
Commissioner Kosabun.
Here.
May please have Reverend Brian Robertson come give the invocation. And can we please stand and afterwards salute the flag?
In addition to being pastor at First Methodist Church, I just want to note that I'm also glad and proud and humbled to be one of the chaplains for the police department here in the city of Millville and also for the fire department. Would you pray with me? God, as we come together tonight to take care of your business for our beloved city, I ask that you would give all of the commissioners wisdom tonight to seek your face for it. Lord, to keep in mind the good of our entire community and city as they deliberate the things that are before them tonight. And Lord, that we, as the folks who also care and love the city of Millville so much, would be blessed because of the work that they do. Where there is fear, we ask for peace. Where there is anger, we ask for calm. That your decisions would be the ones that get made here for all of us. We pray it in the name of your love. Amen.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being conducted in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act of 1975, was advertised, posted, and made available to the public as required by statute. The municipal clerk is directed to include a statement in the minutes of this meeting. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we had two. We had the addition of Resolution Number 12 authorizing a professional services contract with McManam &amp; Scotland Bowman to serve as redevelopment council services from June 8th, 2024 through June 7th, 2025 in an amount not to exceed $50,000. And also the removal of Resolution Number One, which was awarding a professional service contract to Art C.
Thank you. Bills?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second, pay the bills. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Your motion carries.
Minutes.
Make a motion to approve and dispense with the reading of the following minutes and proceed with the regular order of business. January 7th, 2025, closed session. January 7th, 2025, reorganization meeting. January 21st, 2025, work session.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second on the reading and dispens of the minutes. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Your motion carries.
Public comment on agenda items only. We have now reached the public comment portion for agenda items only. If anybody would like to come to the podium, state your name, address your concerns on what agenda item, and please limit your comments to approximately five minutes. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Fred Jacob. I live at 7 Oriole Lane, and I practice law at 600 West Main Street. I'm here to speak in support of the resolution that Commissioner Kosabun was gracious enough to introduce. And I believe that is Resolution Number 19, Roman numeral three. So what I'm here to seek is the city's permission to make improvements on the island on Oriole Lane at the end of the cul-de-sac. And Jean Claire works for my office as the receptionist, and she will give each of you a diagram that will make it easier to understand the history and what I'm trying to do. We do have extra copies if any member of the public would like one. Thank you. So if you look at the first page, that's going to show you on the bottom Oriole Lane and the cul-de-sacs to the right and the left of it on Heron and Teal. The property that I own is Lot 17, right up here at the top. And the island is right in front of my house. At the top shows a tax map of what we call Woodland Shores. That which is in yellow is Phase One when the Morris River Company determined that they were going to develop this area along Union Lake. And Phase One is in yellow. They deeded the property to a developer that they controlled in 1965. The other areas, the one in tan, is Phase Two, and they submitted that in 1973. Sometime later, the area in green was done. Now, we may as well call this Wawa because Wawa really is Morris River Company and the developer and so forth. And their plan was not that this would fall on the city, but it would fall on the homeowners through a community association. And the Union Lake Association was formed for Phase One, and all the property owners were supposed to contribute maybe $30, $35, $40 a year towards the islands. So all of the property owners in Phase One had a share in all of the islands. It wasn't just the Oriole Lane residents controlled what happened on Oriole Lane. But the association didn't meet, apparently, and they stopped paying dues. And in the early 1980s, a superior court judge said the Union Lake Association is defunct, and they can't enforce anything. I mean, there's covenants and all the deeds can't be enforced in Phase One. So if you look at Page Two, that's a diagram of the Oriole Lane Island. And where you see these little dots, I would like to insert border stones, and you can see them in some of the other pictures. And I'll come back to Page Two, but let's look at the pictures. And you can see, I mean, they're pretty big, and they would be inserted into concrete. The reason for this is that makes it so much easier to maintain. I purchased the property in front of this nine and a half years ago. And Dr. Davies, who used to own my property, had at least 20 azaleas planted in the inner circle or the outer circle. And the inner circle had rhododendron and laurel. But they reached their 45- to 50-year life cycle about two years ago, and they all started to die. And it looked terrible. And it was costing a fortune to maintain because I don't have the time to go out and do it, so I had to pay landscapers to do it. So I think you can see this particular picture is looking north to south. And there'll be border stones in this area, and we'll plant a couple of plants in there. And then this inner part, which has the dead rhododendron that used to be beautiful every June, that has to be taken out, and we'll put something there. It's a little bit more sun resistant. Rhododendron really isn't. But you might see Dr. Davies put a sprinkler system so he could pay to sprinkle the island. And I've been doing that for the past nine and a half years. But there's nothing there to maintain anymore. So I think it will be beautiful if you allow me to do this. I think it'll set an example for the other islands. The last page is the house that Dr. Davies built and that I was fortunate enough to be able to purchase. That looks toward the lake. And so I will do it all at my expense, but the city now owns it. The property association is defunct. The other two areas at Woodland Shore.
Mr. Jacob, can you please wrap up?
Yes, I will do that. So I'm just asking your permission. The city now owns it, and to do something like this, I feel like I should have city permission to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. And real quick, I'm looking at a picture from Google Streets from June of 2023, and what you provided, they don't look anything alike, so.
Hi, Greg Hears, 409 Peach Drive, Millville. I just had a question about Resolution Eight. It was, I noted inside, sorry, I gotta pull up the citation. I noted inside of the Resolution, it noted NJ 7:3-26. And I just had a quick question. I know under that law, there's a provision that if green acres is changed, sometimes there's a chance that, like, the state, like, the city has to put that comparable amount of land into place somewhere else or adjoining. And I wasn't sure if the city had done that. And if the city hadn't, what they had done in lieu of it to, like, I'm not that super familiar with the law, so I guess I'm, this is part of me learning something a little bit too from you guys. But my question is, like, how, like, is the city going to, like, set aside another amount of green acres land, or do they not have to? Like, is there something else in the law? Question might be more for Brock. I'm not sure. That's my question.
If I may, Greg, this is, you'll notice there's a pump station.
Yeah.
Right, so this, that area should have been cordoned off or whatever a long time ago. Somehow it doesn't appear on the green acres maps, and so it's a matter of.
So that's, that's the, okay. Was, is any other land that's comparable being added on, or is there?
I think wherever they had it or whatever, but it was through engineering, so.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if, like, there was another piece added on, or if there was, like, we had the state paid us for that land, or?
They did want us to pay for trees or something, for something.
Yeah, because I saw something about trees in the law.
This is all, this is all, all that has to get done from.
Yeah, I understand that. I was just curious if there was more, if that comparable amount of green acres land was being added somewhere else or adjoining? Because it seems like under that statute, it's required, but only under, there are circumstances where it's not. I wasn't sure if we.
Yeah, engineering would know exactly, so.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no one else, I will close public comment on agenda items only. Presentations?
Presentations, we have none.
Petitions and letters, please.
I just need a motion to receive and file a letter from Drew Scarpa resigning from the zoning board of adjustment effective January 24th, 2025.
Make a motion?
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second, petition is letter, item number one. Any comments? Yes, Drew was a great addition to the zoning board. He just has other conflicts and would like to prioritize his time towards that. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Your motion carries.
Reports of Commissioners. Commissioner Hewitt, go ahead.
Well, it has been a bit of a tame two weeks since the last meeting as far as fire and rescue goes. Fire mostly, rescue's always busy. Police Department, like, like always, is, is very busy. That's really just about all I've got. I don't know if people realize it or not, but I'll put it out there. Election time, folks. Next week, if you just want to get interested in pulling petitions, you can call our clerk and give her your name and address, because petitions are ready for those of you that are willing to come up here and take these seats.
They're not ready, but I'm taking names and numbers for when they are ready. They're under legal review. Correction.
Not ready, ready. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Hewitt. I was gonna be like, wow, it's February 4th, and we're nowhere near a primary, but I was like.
569 signatures, sir.
Yeah, do you have something to do, Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes, I'd like to receive and file the yearly end-of-the-year EMS and fire department reports for the year 2024. Make motion.
Second.
I have motion and a second, receiving and file at the end of year for fire and EMS. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Your motion carries.
Now, anything further?
That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Commissioner Sui?
Yeah, so last week, we started taking down the Christmas decorations. Unfortunately, the bucket truck broke, and it's out for repair. We did order, we do have a new one on order, but it's not here yet. We should have the old one back by the end of the week. We also held the real tea party on January 25th. Had a great turnout. The children had a great time. And we want to thank the Riverfront Renaissance Center for the Arts for hosting us and Colonial Florists for their donation of flowers. Our next recreation event will take place on Saturday, March 1st, which is the annual snowflake plunge at Union Lake, starting at noon. And just a reminder, we are still accepting pet photo contest entries until February 23rd. Your photo can be dropped off at the senior center located at 1500 South Second Street or here at City Hall. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sui. Commissioner Kosabun?
All right, Streets and Roads, 36 tires collected, 14 appliances collected, 281 electronic waste received, 125 Christmas trees collected, 2,750 bags of loose leaves collected. The move out of the 15th Street warehouse is complete. Our salt building is now full and ready for the next storm. Loose leaf collection is now over. The next collection will be in April. Residents are to place loose leaves out the last two weeks of March for the April collection. Brush collection will be in May. Residents are to place the brush out the last two weeks of April for May collection. Any questions? Please contact Streets and Roads, 825-7000, extension 7388. Recycling, in January, we replaced 13 damaged carts, nine missing or stolen carts. We delivered carts to six residential units that previously did not have them. We exchanged one set of carts for a resident who wanted a smaller one. There were 12 carts purchased by residents. 20 notices of violations were issued in January. One ticket was issued in January. From July through December of 2024, we recollected and recycled 3,36016 pounds of covered electronics. This will result in a revenue of $3,610 for the city. This will go into solid waste utility. Please remind residents that the county has started a reusable shopping bag recycling program. The bags are sent out to be cleaned, sanitized, and donated to the local food banks. These bags may be dropped off to Streets and Roads at 15th Street between 7:00 and 3:00 Monday to Friday, except for holidays. Please remove any tags, receipts, et cetera, from bags before dropping them off. Please remind residents that the ACUA has been instructed to not pick up recycled carts that have contamination trash in them. Residents can get a list of items that are acceptable curbside on our website or at the Streets and Roads office at 416 South 15. Also, please remind residents that they can bring their TVs, computers, and other small electronic devices to the 15th Street along with used motor oil and antifreeze that are uncontaminated. And they may be dropped off between 7:00 and 3:00 Monday to Friday, except for holidays. That's all we have for them.
Thank you, Commissioner Kosabun. Vice Mayor Watson?
Just to touch base on just a couple of things we have going on. Water Department would like me to let residents know that they may be receiving letters for their meter upgrades. It's going to be for the first phase. The company is going to be called Meter Tech. That's who you're going to be scheduling your appointments through. I believe it's through phone or by email. Again, this is for automated metering services. It also has a couple of other things, like alarms, you know, that basically if there's a high water usage, it'll send a notification to the water department to investigate, you know, things of that sort. For the sewer department, been in contact with them over the past couple of weeks. Sal's been providing engineering department with information on sludge disposal. Hopefully, we can have, like, again, a presentation, you know, to increase what we're doing so far with ordering our new roll-off truck, the progress that we made with Synergro. Basically, we would like to see new equipment installed, you know, to get better solids quality, get a cheaper product, or cheaper cost to dispose of our sludge at the sewer plant. So a nice little project to work on with Sal and Wayne from Engineering. Engineering, they have a lot going on. I'm just going to touch base on a couple of things. Waste water treatment plant upgrade, which would be the third secondary clarifier. There was a couple of potential change orders. Had to do with ordering some products as far as, like, different pipes with different linings. The issue was basically, you know, lead times, how far out we can get these materials. So engineering department is continuously working diligently, you know, doing what we can to make sure this project continues. We have the Ireland Avenue force main making headway with that project. One of the things that were brought up was maybe doing a route adjustment. So interested to see where we end up. There was, SSI crews performed these tests on January 17th, 2025. Pits were done at the pump station in the yard and on the roadway to locate existing utilities for the force main. Pits were also done along Ireland Avenue, Arlington Avenue, and the alleyway. The route adjustments were made to allow for the existing force main location. Field measurements were taken at Park Avenue and Fulton Street for determining the required precast manhole depths. And once we get some more information, we could probably move forward with that route change. Also, engineering has been working with the contractor when it comes with refill material. Instead of hauling DGA, we could just use the material that we pull from, you know, basically the job. Again, meeting with the engineering department. They're working with water department on a plan to place well 15 and 16 back into service, increasing the water system capacity. Beginning stages, there's a lot of work that has to be done to determine, you know, cost and, you know, possibility of doing that, including water tests. Lot to really highlight, but I think we'll just kind of keep it, keep it there for right now.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor Watson. The first 2025 public hearing of fiscal year 2025-2029, Community Development Block Grant, what we commonly call CDBG. Annual Action Plan and the Continuation of the Home, H O M E, REIT Investment Partnership will be held on Thursday, February 27th, 4:30 PM, right here in City Call Commission Chambers. The information received from interested persons at the hearings will assist the city committee in the preparation for the 2025 annual plan. The hearings will address housing, community, and economic development needs and development of proposed activities. All community organizations, applicants are encouraged to attend the February 27th public hearing for this consideration. And as a note, the next meeting on the 18th, I will say this as well for another reminder for those. On January 29th, in coordination with the Parks Department, Millville Babe Ruth had a visit from Major League pitcher Chase Petty. He went to Millville school system till he was about 14 and then moved outside of the city and continued playing baseball. Was first-round draft pick, 26th overall for the Minnesota Twins, got picked up by the Reds. Reason I'm saying this is because his Chase Petty, the Chase Petty Foundation is all about giving back to Millville and all about giving back to Millville Babe Ruth. That's where he's realized, where he started his adult playing career, or young adult playing career. And he gave a check of $3,000 to Millville Babe Ruth. Millville Babe Ruth does a lot through what they can do and what the city Parks Department can help out. And I know the dedication that the Parks Department does for all the sports athletic teams. But to seeing some, seeing one of our many professional athletes truly give back to the city of Millville in that specific way, it means a lot to me. I have the State of the City address on February 12th at New Jersey Motorsports Park. General, the Greater Millville Chamber of Commerce always puts that on. I hope to see a lot of our city employees there throughout all of our departments. And I'm excited to what I have ready to be sharing. I talked about the great news. I will wait till the end of the meeting to popular news that's on social media and on the local news channel, but I'll wait for the end to say that. Ordnances on the first reading.
Okay, so our first item is an ordinance authorizing amendment to motor vehicle and traffic regulations, municipal code Article 10, Schedule 21, to remove parking for, parking reserved for handicapped persons at 207 East Broad Street.
Make motion.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second on the ordinance and the first reading, item number one. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolutions.
Okay, so item one is actually going to be a resolution approving towing operators' license application for the period covering January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2026 for the following applicant, On Demand Towing and Repair LLC of South Second Street, Millville, New Jersey.
Make motion.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second on Resolution Item Number One. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Motion carries. We have a resolution authorizing Frederick A. Jacob Esquire to place border stones set in concrete on the Oriole Lane Island at his own personal expense.
Make a motion?
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second on Resolution Item Number Two. Any comments?
Yes, I want to thank you, Mr. Jacobs, for doing this. It's, you know, been a long time since I had a conversation with you, but thank you, thank you for doing this. You know, you see people do care about what's going around you, the baseball player, so you see that kind of stuff, so it's a great thing.
Yes, as I will say, it's a thank you for coming here and showing what you plan to do. And as I said, I looked at a 2023 picture, and I assume that picture is more current to this presentation. So I look forward to seeing the progression of the project and when it's done, assuming this passes. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Your motion carries. Item four is a resolution authorizing the award of an opioid education mini grant to the Millville Board of Education in the amount of $19,720.
Move the resolution on item four. With that, I do have certification of availability of funds in the amount of $19,720, signed by our CFO, Susan Quinones.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item five is a resolution awarding Action Uniform Company LLC for all items at the prices listed on the attached bidder's price sheet in an amount not to exceed $21,000 for the period commencing February 4th, 2025, ending February 3rd, 2026.
Make motion on Resolution Number Five. With that, I do have certification of availability of funds in the amount of $21,000, signed by our CFO, Susan Quinones.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second on the resolution. Any comments?
Yes, I like the fact that we're one company now. I guess we were in past years, various different companies, so it's all one, so I think.
Well, we did that to save money before.
That's a great idea, yeah.
No, I mean, separated them before we saved money, yes.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Sui?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Your motion carries. Item six is a resolution awarding a professional services contract through a fair and open program. Item six is a resolution awarding a professional services contract through a fair and open process, appointing Allen Associates to serve as broker of record for employee benefits for the city of Millville for a one-year term.
Make a motion on resolution item number six. With that, I do have certification of availability of funds based on the percentage of premiums, signed by our CFO, Susan Quinones.
Second motion.
It balances out, yeah, through there.
Thank you for the.
Insurance.
Any comments? Sorry, I got a motion in a second. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Suie?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven is a resolution amending Resolution Number 168-2024 and changing the contract purchase order from Allegiance Trucks to Route 23 Auto Mall for a not to exceed cost of $154,123 for the purchase of a 2024 utility service truck.
Make a motion, and with that, I have certifications of funds from Susan Quinones, Chief Finance Officer, in the amount of $154,123.
Second motion.
We have a motion in second on the resolution. Any comments?
Yes, this is for the water department to replace a utility van that has transmission issues. This piece of equipment goes out, you know, to service water, main breaks, emergencies, and/or scheduled planned repairs. So, you know, if you want water, we need the equipment to make sure that gets carried to your home.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Suie?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item eight is a resolution authorizing support of the State House Commission final application to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for minor diversion of Parkland and Riverside Springstead Patriot Park, Block 123, Lot 1.
Make motion on resolution number eight.
Second motion.
Have a motion in second on this resolution. Any comments? Yes, this is all for the replacement of what we call City Hall Main Street Bridge. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Suie?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item nine is a resolution appointing Kevin Hall as Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator to fill Sherman Taylor's unexpired term, which will expire July 31, 2025.
Make motion.
Second motion.
We have a motion in second on resolution appointing Kevin Hall as Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator. Any comments?
Yes. Kevin alone with being a paid firefighter here in Millville. He is also a dispatcher, Cumberland County Dispatch, and he will make a great addition to our Office of Emergency Management.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Suie?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 10 is a resolution authorizing a purchase order with Aon Consulting Incorporated for G A S B 75 Actuarial Valuation Services in an amount not to exceed $29,500 from January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2026.
Make a motion, and with that, I have certifications of funds for $29,500 from Chief Financial Officer Susan Quinones.
Second motion.
We have a motion in second on the resolution. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Suie?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 11 is a resolution authorizing adjustments to the tax and utility records.
Make motion on resolution item number 11.
Second motion.
We have a motion in second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Suie?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 12 is a resolution awarding a professional services contract through a non-fair and open process, appointing McManaman Scotland Baumann LLC to serve as redevelopment council services in an amount not to exceed $50,000 beginning June 8, 2024 and ending June 7, 2025.
Make motion. With that, I do have certification of availability of funds in the amount of $50,000, signed by our CFO, Susan Quinones.
Second motion.
We have a motion in second. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Suie?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
New business.
I just need a motion to authorize the following social affair permits, which is the Milk Elk Sports Frolic at the Elks Lodge on February 17, 2025, from 5 to 9 PM, and the Millville Elks Comedy Show at the Elks Lodge on May 3, 2025, from 5 to 11 PM.
Make a motion.
Second motion.
We have a motion in second. Any comments?
Yes. Good, I think you can.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, I have a comment. I enjoy going to the Sports Frolic every single year. They always have great speakers, and that's what I just asked the Secretary of the Elks?
I am the Secretary.
I didn't make sure I got it right. I didn't know if you're a treasure or not. Secretary of the Elks. I didn't know if this was public knowledge or not, but I guess it is now. So former Eagles great Ike Reese will be the presenting speaker of the Millville Sports Frolic. I know it does sell out. It's always a great turnout. And I look forward to being there on September 17. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Suie?
Yes.
Mayor Romanek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Public comment portion. We have now reached the public comment portion of our meeting. Anyone who would like to address the commission, please go to the podium, state your name, and address your concerns. Please limit your comments to approximately five minutes. Thank you.
Debbie Malone, 1304 Geisel Drive, Millville. I just want to bring up the resolution that we did take off the agenda for this meeting. We did speak about it 19.1 at the work session. And I just want to reiterate my statement from the work session that with the exception of Commissioner Suie and Mayor Romanek about the Art C. and Bill Horn PR, PR business, I am, again, still shocked at the shortsightedness of this commission in this. I just want you to take a minute, look in front of you. Do you see anybody at those tables? I have been coming to these commission meetings for over 50 years. When I would come, I usually came with my husband, who worked at the time for the local cable TV, and would take on his camera and shoot the whole process. There would be Joyce Vanamans sitting there, two or three other reporters, even sometimes the radio station. They're not here now. So what we have to rely on now is social media. And we all know sometimes how that works, had that with the, with the poor library this week, with the lies that were going on. So I just want to say that we need to rely on social media. We need a good, positive way to get the news out because we don't have that. When a business comes into town, you know what they look at. They look at meetings, they look at businesses. They look at what's going on. What are they going to see? They're going to see a big zero. They are going to see nothing. This city commission, I understand, is being a penny wise, but you're a dollar short on this. It's very narrow-minded. Mr. Watson, you said you needed time to review. I heard you say that. I was getting in my car to come here. You needed time to review. How long have you been on the commission? Two years now? And you haven't reviewed or studied this? Shame on you. I'm sorry. It's $20,000. You said, Mr. Hewitt, that, you know, we might need that money for the police budget for salaries. Okay, can that money be used for police budget? I know how budgets work. Some money cannot be used for certain things. So are you sure? Is that $20,000 really going to matter in the scheme of things? Is it going to come out to what, one, two, three bucks for each cop? No, it's not. So I just want you to think about you need, and I have said this. I actually sat in a meeting with Lisa Orendorf when she was mayor, with Tony Trongone as the superintendent, with Mr. Campari, and I think Mr. Davis was there as well. And we discussed how important PR is and good PR. So I want you to consider that. We need, as a commission, to become aggressive with presenting this city in a positive light instead of the constant negativity that we are always seeing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Malone.
Greg Kears for NiP Drive. Again, I want to state I am not speaking on behalf of an organization that I am employed by or am a member of. That being said, I believe this was, this decision by the commission to even remove this, let alone, it was cowardly not to vote on it, frankly, in a political sense. But to remove it when there's literally nothing but bad news coming out of Millville. For instance, we just watched a post go up on social media, the primary news source of Millville. It was talking about how our police are leaving here and finding better places to go. This is in the same week I watched my landlord get assaulted in front of me, and I work right here on this block. So I can't help but notice you find $50,000 to pay an attorney somehow? Possibly, could that have been spent better than maybe having like an associate, a partner, and a paralegal look at it when maybe you could have just done some positive advertising? Like I said, in my profession, part of my role is organizing an events calendar. I know the amount of staff time and the cost that goes into it. You guys were getting a steal because this man showed up everywhere. And, you know, there aren't really many people that have civic pride in this place anymore. There's a lot of fake stuff. There's a lot of social media fakery, a lot of the attention economy of it. But there's nothing real. This man was real. He cared about here. He had a genuine care. And what did you do? Dogged it. That's all.
Hi, Cindy Cook, Valene. I got a couple of comments. First of all, I didn't even know that Art C. was going to be discussed at all. I didn't look at the agenda. But I had come to the meeting planning on complimenting Bill. Bill has done a phenomenal job of covering activities in our city. He is at every single show at the Leeway photographing fantastic pictures of what's on stage and the different acts, publicizing what's going on in Millville. I think he needs to be commended, and I think we owe him a round of gratitude. Now, the other thing I would like to say is this is not meant to be critical, okay? What I'm going to say now is not critical. I honestly would like an answer. Right now on social media, there's a lot of discussion going on about the city of Millville and our library. I would like it addressed once and for all. Are you planning on taking over the library in two years and making it into a court system or something? Or what's going on? After we did the donations and the funding and the fundraising and everything for a library, it kind of upsets me that there's rumors going around. And like I said, I am not saying this being critical of y'all. I think this is a rumor that needs to be put to rest once and for all. Is our library remaining a library? Thank you.
I will, we wait till everybody gives comments. Well, I'll address this at the end, Courtney. Thank you, though.
I just would like to thank three of your professionals for working with me on this island project. Bob Thomas is an absolute treasure. He does the tax maps. He's the best surveyor, and his knowledge is amazing. Brian Rosenberg, the tax assessor, is the consummate professional, always so polite, always so willing to help. And the other treasurer who worked with me is your solicitor, Brock Russell. He is always available. He is always knowledgeable. He is so capable. And you would never be able to replace what he brings in his knowledge of the city. He grew up here. His family is from here. He's an irreplaceable resource, in my opinion. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs.
Howdy, howdy. It's good to see you guys again. William Jones, 610 East Mulberry. I just had a question for you guys about if the city had a actual, like, working animal control guy. The reason is because the cats in our area down where we live, like, within four or five blocks, are destroying everything. Like, I mean, spraying houses, constantly mating, getting into garbage, spreading it all over the place. And me and a few of my neighbors have even gone around and started, like, getting gloves and picking up trash in the area. We're just trying to see what's going on because I've called the number that's on the website at least a dozen times and left messages, and nobody's gotten back to me. I'd be more than willing to, like, bait the traps and let them know when it's full, like, when there's a cat in there, but I haven't gotten anything. That's all I had. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Mary Messick here of Millville. Once again, I'm going to reiterate what I stated during the work session. As far as the public relations or the advertisement, I've come to these meetings for quite a long time, and I've said it time and time again. We need to publicize Millville on a good note. Stop the negativity. Yes, we've got businesses that are now starting to come into the city. How much more can you get with nothing to show the good? A business card says something about you, about the business. Well, we don't have a business card that says Millville is a good place. So we need to advertise it. I'm tired of seeing the commercial for Vineland. Love New York. Come see Mississippi. See all of those commercials. But we don't see nothing that says, "Come see Millville." Why? I can answer that. Because we don't have a public relations. I've said it time and time again. As I said before, we've got highways. It's easy for stuff to come in and stuff to go out. As far as material, equipment, products, we also have an airway. We've got a waterway. We've got railroad. Other than that, what do we got? Word of mouth? Yes, we have events, and yes, sometimes social media can be a very nice thing. But the majority of the time, it's a Debbie Downer. And I do really believe we need to invest in that. I'm not equipped to do the advertisement. Yeah, I can network with people. That's easy enough to do. But we need somebody that knows the advertisement business and needs to be able to do this. And I thank you.
Joe Southern, 51 Dorset Avenue. I'm here as the coordinator of the Millville Administrative Alliance Committee and let yous know that this Friday, we're taking 15 kids up to the Elks Peer Leadership Conference, which they'll have a weekend. They have workshops. They bring presenters then from all over the country. I'm not sure how long the Elks have been doing this. I know we've been going up to it for 30 years. And I'd like to thank yous for making that happen this year because during COVID, the governor took a good portion of our money from the alliance, not just our alliance, but all the alliances. And without the support the yous have shown us, we would not have been able to do this this year. And so I thank you. I also like to thank yous for the program with the schools to bring in speakers. Again, they're going to bring in speakers from all over the country. And without you, we would not have been able to do that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Southern.
Hi, Tom McGinty. I'm from Millville. I just have another question. Last meeting, we had the thing with the emergency hazmat removal. Last meeting, we had the thing with the emergency hazmat removal and has anybody determined what the material was that needed to be disposed of so rapidly and what happened to it and what did it cost? That's the first question I have. I've been also made aware through private entities that the, there is a serious homeless problem down on private property off of the railroad leading from Second Street on out practically to the edge of town out there by Orange Street and so forth. We looked at it, went out, drove around, took some pictures, talked to some people and then I talked to representatives from the city. I sent some pictures to different ones and made them aware of the situation that was at hand. In the last week, there's been an additional six tents come in there and I don't know how many other people. Atlantic Electric got involved because the, they tried to, I don't know, they set fire to one of the poles out there. It's a high tension line that runs from Second Street on out. So now we got Atlantic Electric involved. We have the Winchester and Western is concerned that they're going to come through there at night at two o'clock in the morning when they do and run somebody over along those tracks. There's drug use, there's theft, they're burning wire, which presents a real problem. Just look that up. And they've destroyed the woods behind us, business that spends millions a year in taxes here and, an aggregate, I should say. In addition, complaints from the area businesses out along Seventh and Eighth Street, they break in. The Phenom Factory, I spoke to the representative from there because I heard she wasn't too happy. At night, when they're leaving there, they have to escort people out to their cars because the homeless come out of their tents and their pallet homes and whatever else they scrap together out in the woods. And they generally, they practically accost people. The woman is really upset and she's lost business because there are older women that used to come to her Zumba classes and so forth and so on. She said they can no longer come because she's, they're afraid to come in and out of the building out there on Seventh Street.
One minute remaining, Mr. McGinty.
Okay. The, this was brought up before, I tried to do a presentation, I got cut short then too, but to make the long and short of it, something needs to happen. You know, we've been kind of looking at this. We passed an ordinance and to my knowledge, not really anything's occurred. I spoke to a couple of the policemen. They're very nice. They're proactive, but somebody's got to take the leash off and let them get out there and do their job. Thank you.
Seeing no one further, I will close public comment of the meeting. Closing comments of commissioners, Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll hit a couple things quick, then I got one thing to spend some time on. Mr. Williams, if you'd like to see me after the meeting, give me your number. Cats are a very touchy situation. We do have an ACO, ACO. I'll get your number, I'll get in touch with him. He'll call you and he'll explain the cat situation with you. It's not like dogs and stuff. So, get with me before you leave if you would please. Cindy, can you hear me? Cindy? Can you hear me? Okay. Just checking. Earlier, no, no, I'm not being funny folks. Earlier in the work session, we discussed, there was a discussion about the library. You weren't here, so I can't blame you. I'll repeat myself again, because there are other people here in the chambers. There has not been, there will not be, any discussion of the Millville PD or the courts moving into the library. I mentioned that earlier when I was talking with Courtney. That way you know, and Cindy, like a lot of people who are in here, you have my phone number. Reach out, especially when it's the Facebook commission that you're looking at. Thank you. We had a talk the other day, didn't we?
Yes.
Bear with me here. I followed up on this with the chief. The chief went out there today. This is his text to me after I followed up with him in person. This is his text to me earlier today. Just to follow up. I went out to the Eighth Street area and walked through the encampment. I also sent officers out there in the afternoon today to identify and give notice to anyone that out there of future trespassing complaints. We don't sign trespassing complaints. We talked about this the other day. The owner of that property, and we all know who it is, must step forward, must sign the complaints. Anybody goes out there and decides to take, like I've seen on Facebook, again, the Facebook commission's going to fix everything folks, going to go out there and put barbed wire up, electric fence, bulls. You're going to be breaking the law. The owner knows, sign a complaint. The police will then do what is in their power, once a trespassing complaint is signed. Now, I know for a fact, you talked about the Phenom Factory. And we talked about this to an extent the other day, so I'm a little bit beside myself. There's a house down on the end of the road on the Phenom, Eighth Street, that I used to go to a lot till my friend passed away. And I watched the people moving in and out and in and out of that old building along railroad track. Shoot, I've even watched them ride what I call the Millville Express right into town when the trains coming from down below in Sandlands. This stuff that's going on, I realize that the owners of the property are upset. The owners of the property need to come forward. They need to sign the complaints. We're not the cavalry, like people were suggesting, suggesting. We don't just go out there and round them up. Guess what they found the other day when they went there also? One person. Now, I know they're back there and I know where they are in the rest of town, so do most people, but come on, man, this, you're on that Facebook post too. We got to work with the PD to do things the correct way to get something solved. Next thing you know, we don't do that, we'll have people coming here and hammering us. What's the PD doing? They're like renegades. I'm not going to listen to that. Follow the rights, follow the rules. I think I told you the other day. I wouldn't know Mr. Harris unless he came here and introduced himself to me. I remember his dad well when he had the dealership down the bottom of the hill, but come on, man. A little bit of help here.
Mr. McGinty, this is his time to talk.
Little bit of help here. There are people that are pushing this. It's, they're always pushing. We had a lot of talking tonight about correcting Facebook. You can't talk for them gentlemen. You can't. You can actually get yourself jammed up bud. Come on. I know you want to help. I know your heart's in it, but you can get jammed up out there trying to interact with these people. Let them sign a trespassing complaint. The PD will do what is in the realm of them legally doing. With that all, that, Mayor, progress.
Thank you, Commissioner Hewitt. Commissioner Cosman.
No, I just want to thank everyone for their feedback to us and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Suie.
Yes, first I'll talk about the Bill Horn situation. I had him on the agenda before, a motion did not get seconded. I did not want to put him through that again, so that's why I had the resolution removed from the agenda. I sincerely hope that my fellow commissioners reconsider their position. If you can't see the relationship between good publicity, the advertisement of businesses that have come here, particularly new ones, the advertisement of small businesses that are here to see growth in business, if nobody knows people are coming here, if nobody understands that, other people won't come. You really need to look at that as an investment, not as money that could go somewhere else because the investment is what allows us to pay our employees and our police officers, our firemen, our park workers, our office workers. That's what allows that to happen, your increase in ratables. If you just leave it to raising taxes, there's not going to be anybody here. All right, with that, I'll move on to the new building. We don't have the environmentals yet complete. I hope we get them. Something else the public should be aware of, in addition to the eighty-five hundred dollars a month rent that we're paying under the lease, we are also paying the taxes. So that's approximately eleven hundred bucks. One-third of that goes back to us, that part's a wash, so it's really closer to ninety-four hundred bucks, ninety-three hundred bucks, as a cost to the taxpayer per month. Now, on to the library and social media. So I remember my grandfather told me about an event and this event occurred in nineteen thirty-eight, so I was pretty young. I don't think anybody here was actually present for the event, but some of you probably remember hearing about it. And this event was a live radio broadcast by Orson Welles. The broadcast concerned an invasion of the earth by aliens. The fictional work was called The War of the Worlds. I'm sure some of you remember the movie starring Tom Cruise. Well, even though it several times during the broadcast, it was announced it was fiction, people actually believed it. It caused a mass panic. And that reminds me of what happened to the library this week. So I'm going to take you about, back about three years, when myself and former business administrator, Comparry, met with a couple members of the library executive board and we were informed that the library needed more money to operate. There was no other extra money at the time. There was no land sales at that time. There's really no money to give them. In subsequent meetings, we suggested the library look at other attempts to create other revenue streams. Now, some of them are possible because of the grant, but we suggested maybe a business center or coffee shop, or there's others ideas. I'm sure there's other libraries that are creating a revenue stream somehow. So those ideas were then rejected. We were told that the library itself, and that is its separate entity with its own bank accounts, would run out of money in a few years if they didn't get more. And talking with Ms. Reese after I went into the library, which I'll get into that, she informed me that if they don't get more money, they're going to have to cut programs. So, that is what I mean when I say we built a beast we cannot feed. We have to have the means to feed that library, which goes back right to Bill Horn and attracting businesses and more ratables and all that stuff. So after seeing a bunch of comments last weekend on social media stating the library was closing and the building would be used for police and court, statements that are not true presently, I went to the library yesterday. So as I approached the counter, there were two people working. I approached a young gentleman nearest to me and I told him that I heard the library was closing. He said, yes, that's what's happening. Then the other individual there asked who I was. I said, I'm Commissioner Suie and I'm the guy that's getting blamed for closing the library. So she said, would I like to see the director? I said, absolutely. So then I went back to Courtney's office and we had a nice conversation. And then I explained to Courtney how I had an intermediary contact a member of the library executive board to support economic development publicly at a meeting. The answer to that request was no. The reason was that they didn't want to make a city commissioner mad by doing so. Well, you know, sorry, but that's a little short sighted on their part, I believe. Ms. Reese also pointed out that the library had not received an increase in funding for about ten years. And I asked her if she knew who was responsible for that increase and she said, no. Well, I knew who it was because it was me. I put the resolution on the agenda. My fellow commissioners at the time approved that increase and that was the first increase they had in many, many years then. So, I remember the executive board returned my call yesterday. And, you know, I stand by my statement. We need a library that works with us, a board that works with us to foster economic development because not to do so is the antithesis of creativity and entrepreneurship that's required for our city to succeed, all of us to succeed. So however much I disagree with them not supporting it, some good has come of this. So, you know, Ms. Reese talked at the work session and how they're doing a fundraiser. Great, you guys like the library, contribute, please, please contribute. Now, for all those on social media, I'll go back to The War of the Worlds and it was mentioned by somebody else here. You know, nineteen thirty-eight, radio and newspaper, that's how you got your information. You didn't get it from TV, you certainly didn't get it from social media. Now, local news, that's how we get it here. We get local news now through social media. Newspapers don't cover, TV covers very little, except I know Mr. Romney's going to talk about something they cover. So, and it's unfortunate that falsehoods and lies are believed more readily and more easily than the truth. This is especially true when comments and explanations that give opposing points of view are not allowed or are removed by the administrators of those Facebook pages. I urge you to use caution when stating something on Facebook, when spreading those rumors. Really look into it. I know Mr. Worthington had a post where he said email Commissioner Suie. Nobody emailed me, not one email concerning the library, not one. So please check your facts. You know, there's some social media pages that say no bashing, no police bashing, name calling, or personal attacks. Well, that seems to only apply to certain people. Now, I left that page. I left it in hopes that the attacks would calm down, but they didn't, they increased. So when I asked to rejoin that page, my request was deleted. I sent a message to the administrator and I told her if I weren't allowed back on, I would address it at a public meeting. I'm sure some of you saw the post that she put up there saying I threatened her. Well, I know that there are many people that redefine words, but me talking about posting on a public, or not a public, it's a private webpage, but posting on Facebook certainly should not be construed as a threat. There was no implication of harm or any such thing like that. So, you know, someone else said on the page, let the defense on the field. And I fully expect not to be let on that page again and that's okay, but keep in mind that you're getting a one side point of view and that page is Millville, the good, the bad, and the ugly, and it doesn't always deal in fact. Keep that in mind folks, please. Now, let's see. So at the end of the last meeting, something happened that should never happen at a commission meeting. At the end of that meeting, Mr. Worthington approached me and without my consent, placed his hands on my shoulder and my breast. I might even have felt a little squeeze. Now, I don't condone or nor will I tolerate unsolicited, non-consensual, physical or sexual contact. I don't expect any of you to tolerate that either. So it's okay to talk, okay to get angry, it's okay to have a discussion, but please, no more physical contact. And with that, progress.
Thank you, Commissioner Suie. Vice Mayor Watson.
Touching base back on the artsy, past couple of years, I did support artsy, you know, but more recently and beginning month of December is when advertising fell underneath my powers and duties. As I've stated before, there's other things that have been taking priority for me to inquire and investigate this. And I could, well, to give you an example, trying to keep a good solicitor here with us. Many other things that I, again, want to refrain from speaking about. Many other things that I, again, want to refrain from speaking about, because in my eyes, it's mostly just damage control. So, moving forward with Art C, I do want to take the time and make a good decision, something against Bill Horn or Art C, I think they've done a fabulous job as far as, you know, their presentation, what they have to offer, and, you know, what they're doing with the Levoi. So, I'm just asking for more time, that's what I was asking for. To answer one of the questions that was at the podium, the material that was at the warehouse, we went over this already, but it was a hundred and twenty bags of limestone, sixty bags of fertilizer, a hundred and fifty tubes of commercial adhesive sealant, fifty-five gown, fifty-five gown drum of liquid that had flammability and health hazards on it, other than that was unidentified, five gown bucket of flammable liquid, eight bags of vermic, I can't even pronounce that word.
Vermiculate.
Yeah, vermiculate, thank you very much. Blood pressure's getting there. Partial pallet of boxes containing assortment of hand sanitizer, a partial pallet of boxes containing sanitizer wipes. I don't remember the, what the price was, but I think the not to exceed amount was twenty-five Phase one environmentals did come back, and the recommendation was to do soil samples. Soil samples were already taken, we were waiting results for that. You know, I love how we keep, man, I love how we keep bringing this to attention, it's like a child throwing a temper tantrum. But if you didn't want to pay taxes, you didn't want to pay lease, maybe you should have went with the idea I presented a year ago, when I wanted to buy or use city-owned property and put brand new structures up for our departments. Other ideas were presented, and at the last minute, we were lucky enough to work with a good flaming like the Goldellis to put this building together for Parks Department. Social media, I'm not a social media fan, but that doesn't have anything to do with the business aspect of it and advertising for the city of Millville. I do it more so because I'm trying to set an example for my children. I don't let them have social media because I believe that there's too many people in this world to influence them, and it's already hard enough being a parent. So moving forward with that and advertising, I don't have that background, so I need to inquire about it, ask questions. I guess I would start by saying, all right, well, if Art C is making this page or this website, let me see how many views it has. Right? I guess that's a good start, maybe call around the businesses like Commissioner Suie recommended, and you're seeing what their feedback was. And it was very, you know, positive, and then thank you for those that, you know, spoke at this podium, and I'll take that in consideration. And touching base on social media, and even what we say here at the commission, to feed into or respond back to messages on Facebook, right? I believe any residents can, you know, say what they want to, but us as professionals, us as commissioners, us that represent the city of Millville, should probably refrain from some of the things that we say at the meetings and on Facebook. That we're elected officials, we should represent the city well. And sometimes what I see when people send me pictures of what's posted, it's an embarrassment. And I think that alone would probably push people away, push businesses away, because we have somebody on our commission that wants to respond in that manner. And I think before my blood pressure gets any more, I think I'm just going to end with that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Watson. Ms. Malone, thank you. Thank you for your comments at the work session, thank you for your comments here. Greg Kiers, I think if I called you Mr. Kiers, it'd sound like your dad. So Greg, thank you for your, your comments on positive advertisement and the positive of what civic engagement can do for the city. Cindy Cook, I think you got your answer for the library and what we previously discussed. I didn't want to interject, I wanted to hear what you wanted to say fully, and we had a full response ready for you. Mr. Jacobs, thank you for what you are doing and what you're going to continue to do, and I thank you for thanking the city employees of those that helped you to get to this step and ever, and for any future endeavors. Mr. Williams, I think you got a conversation with Kirk after this. Mary Messick, I thank you for your comments in the beginning of the work session, or at the work session, and at closing comments to the public, some of the closing comments. I really thank you, Mary. Joe, thank you for all that you do. Good to see you back and good health. I enjoy when you come here and get to talk about the MMAC. It reminds me of, you know, only becoming a commissioner to realize what MMAC stands for, yet it was my main sponsor during when I played Babe Ruth, and we called it Mamac, because we were thirteen and didn't know what it was. But the Millville Municipal Alliance Committee does a great job, and I thank you, Mr. Sutherland. State of the City is on February twelfth, I get it, it's less, it's eight days away. If you can go, please go. If not, you can always, somebody was talking, Commissioner Hewitt was talking about watching Quinn's broadcasting, it'll be live broadcast on Quinn's broadcast channel if you do not wish to publicly engage. The good news about Millville, that is on local news outlet, I just would like to see a raise of hands, who watches CBS News regularly, spontaneously, sees a post, do you? I know it's not my go-to, I have a, I use another app more regularly, but thank you to CBS News Philadelphia. On January thirty-first, they came down to the city of Millville to interview me and my family. Why? Because my family made a snowman. And that snowman was named Snowquan Barkley by my little, my little cousin. And it got over, you're talking about social media attention, on an Eagles fan page, it got over eighteen thousand likes, over twelve hundred comments, and over a thousand shares from my aunt posting a couple pictures of a snowman that had Eagles draped all over it. So we had reporter Nikki DiMartini, DeMentieri come down with cameraman Tom, and they did a nice story about us. It was about an hour and a half long, it premiered on January thirty-first at around four forty-five PM, and it highlighted Millville. And during the interview, I said who I was, and the video broadcast doesn't have, you know, my name or any of my family's names in it, but the news article does. People see that, we're excited, obviously, you know, I appreciate all fandom of any sports, but I see like Mr. McGinty wearing green. I don't have any professional enough looking to wear green, so city polo it is. But definitely, you know, we might, are probably a town that bleeds green, obviously I see residents, and my friends even, that support other teams, but definitely, go Eagles and go Birds. And always a reminder that, you know, Commissioner Hewitt made it, if you're interested in running for the city commission seat, you know, elections for this year are November fourth. And always, elections have consequences. So I thank each and every one of you coming tonight, I thank each and every one of you that are watching tonight. May God bless the city of Millville, may God bless the United States of America. I have a motion for adjournment.
Make motion.
So move, now I can exercise my